I'd like to call the October 16th Board of Commissioners meeting to order. Our first order of business would be the invocation by Mr. David Cotton, our county manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this opportunity to come before you and conduct the business of Onslow County. Please bless all those who have gathered here this evening. Lord, be with the Commissioners tonight in their deliberation and grant them the knowledge and guidance as they look upon the responsibilities that are before them. Guide them as they make decisions for the betterment of Onslow County and her citizens. Tonight, as we recognize minority enterprise development in Onslow County, we ask that you bless those dedicated to expanding the growth of our community's small and minority-owned businesses. Father, we pray for the men and women in our armed forces who serve our country with tremendous courage, commitment, and sacrifice. May all we do this day bring you honor and glory. We will continue to thank you and praise you for the blessings you have bestowed upon us. Now with deep reverence and respect for the faiths, traditions, and beliefs gathered here tonight, please hear us in a moment of silence. Amen. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cotton. I'd like to have Ms. Sharon Russell, our Deputy County Manager, lead us in the pledge.
(Inaudible) to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome everyone tonight, the ones that's in the audience and also the ones that's looking in on the live feed on GT-10. I'd like to recognize our Sheriff as our elected official here tonight. Thank you, Sheriff, for being here and providing the services you do. We ask that all in attendance please set your cellphones to silent or vibrate mode. The Board offers the public two opportunities to speak during the meeting. Comments during the first public comment period shall be limited to three minutes each and must be directly issue-oriented with the agenda items for this particular meeting. The second public comment period is at the end of the meeting and may be on any issue upon which the Board of Commissioners has control over. During the second public comment period, citizens can address the Board for up to five minutes each. Citizen speakers will be acknowledged in order in which they signed up to speak and will address all comments to the Board as a whole and not one individual Commissioner. Speakers will address the Board from the speaker's podium at the front of the room and will begin their remarks by stating their name and their address. Discussion between speakers and members of the audience will not be allowed. Public comment is not intended to require the Board to answer any impromptu questions. Speakers are expected to be civil in their language and presentation. Any comments where the primary purpose is to promote a business candidacy shall not be allowed. In accordance with the Board's adopted rules of procedure, Commissioners shall reserve responses, if any, for the Commissioners' comment period on the agenda that's at the end of the meeting. With no other items being considered separately, a motion to adopt the meeting agenda is in order.
Mr. Chairman, I move to amend the agenda to include Item 6, Letter P, Leasing of County Assets, 1, and Letter Q, Leasing of County Assets, 2.
Motion in a second.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any discussion? All in favor of amending the agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Now I need a motion to consider the agenda as amended.
Motion.
Not a motion in a second. Motion in a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Approval of the items on the consent agenda. There are several items on the consent agenda, A, B, C, and D. Is there any item on the consent agenda that any Commissioner wants to remove and discuss later at the end of the meeting? I entertain a motion to adopt the consent agenda.
Seven, second.
Second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We are at Item 3, Public Comment Section, which is the three-minute section to which persons can speak concerning agenda items. Mr. Cotton?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. We have two individuals who have signed up for the first public comment period. This is the first public comment period. In accordance with the Board's adopted rules of procedure, Commissioners shall reserve response, if any, for the Commissioner comment period on the agenda. Comments should be limited to three minutes each and must be directly issue-oriented with the agenda items for this meeting. The first individual who has signed up is Mr. Timothy Geis, 838 Fire Tower Road, Jacksonville. It is concerning the Items P and Q. Mr. Geis.
My name is Timothy Geis. I'm the current President of Southwest Youth Football League, also the current President of Southwest Youth Baseball and Softball League, played at Onslow Pines. We have requested this year to rent the bleachers from Onslow Pines. We have done so in the last two years. We were charged $200 a set for the three-month season. This year it was denied, saying they didn't have a price point for that item. We have 145 football players, 47, 48 cheerleaders. At this time, we play at Southwest High School on the practice field. Our parents have nowhere to sit. The bleachers are unused outside of baseball season, so they're kind of sitting. So, I mean, I feel like this would be an opportunity for the county to gain a little revenue and the kids of Onslow County to benefit from the assets that the county has.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
The next person who has signed up, and I apologize if I get the last name wrong, Beth Moore, 136 Plow Point Lane.
I'm addressing the zoning issue off of Piney Green Road and particularly Marshall Farm Subdivision. I've lived over there since the neighborhood was constructed, and the reason I moved to the county is because I didn't want to pay the city taxes. Living so far from the city, I do not benefit from any of the services in the city. I have the Onslow County Sheriff and the Volunteer Fire Department, which have suited my needs just fine. I also have an issue with the way that the homeowners were notified. They posted a poster when he came into the neighborhood, and he had to turn left on Plow Point Lane, and it was not like a big poster. It just said zoning on there. And also, in addition, probably 65% to 70% of those homes in the neighborhood are rentals, so the homeowner is not even in the state. So no written notification of the zoning was sent to the homeowner on the tax records, and if they would have seen they were out of state, they were not notified, because the only notification I received was coming home into the neighborhood one night at 10:00, and I seen a poster on a stick to be over here at 6:00 PM today. So people, we have a lot of homes for sale. We have repossession in the neighborhood. We have a lot of home renovations going on. So people have all kinds of signs in their neighborhood to include political signs. So I didn't feel that was adequate representation or notification to the tax owners, and I don't really see where the services are going to prove for my taxes to go up, to be sucked into the city. And I think most people in the Piney Green neighborhood feel the same way I did about the matter with the notification. And what services are we going to receive in exchange for paying almost double the property tax and having our water and our trash collection go up when we're perfectly satisfied with the way things? And I read the thing here saying minimize the disruption for the property owner. There's been no disruption for me being under the county for the last 15 years of owning my home. The only thing that I'm going to benefit is paying higher taxes, which seems to be going to our criminal justice system here, building a new jail, a new courthouse, when the people out here who live in the city don't really benefit from the criminal justice, because most of them are military or retirees, or they're actively serving, and they're not getting in trouble. So I don't see where the benefit is to me as a homeowner or a county resident of my neighborhood being zoned into the city, except for paying higher taxes and higher services for water and trash collection. Thank you.
Anyone else sign up, Mr. Cotton? We're going to have a public hearing on this, and you can get a chance to speak then if you want to. Is that okay? You didn't sign up?
I wasn't exactly sure that the reason that zoning of my property was on the list or was up for discussion, but I walked in, so I didn't really realize, like the lady said, there's no notification sent out on the actual what this was about.
We'll go ahead and start. We have a proclamation, then we have the public hearing, and you'll get a chance to
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Paul Ray.
Yes, sir. State of North Carolina, County of Onslow, Proclamation, Minority Enterprise Development Week 2017. Whereas the Onslow County Chamber of Commerce will observe Minority Enterprise Development Week from October 23 through October 27, 2017. And whereas, at a time when many Americans are facing extraordinary economic challenges, supporting the development of minority-owned enterprises will help accelerate the revitalization of our economy. And whereas the Jacksonville-Onslow Chamber of Commerce and the Chamber's Minority Business Service Committee diligently work together to expand the growth of our community's small and minority business-owned, correction, minority-owned businesses. And whereas Minority Enterprise Development Week offers an increased opportunity to commemorate the tremendous value minority entrepreneurs and their employees bring to our economy and our nation as a whole. And whereas the Jacksonville-Onslow Chamber of Commerce and the Chamber's Minority Business Service Committee will honor a minority business entrepreneur and the Linda L. Richardson Minority Business Advocate of the Year. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Onslow County Board of Commissioners does hereby acknowledge October 23 through October 27, 2017, as Minority Enterprise Development Week in Onslow County and recognizes the contributions of our community's minority enterprises presented this 16th day of October 2017. The Chairman has requested that Commissioner Mark Price present the proclamation.
I used to hear the statistic that half of all small businesses fail whenever they're started up. So to start up a small business requires courage, requires vision, and out of that vision grows the plan. To initiate, which you've got to believe in, I would think you've got to really believe in that plan, and then you've got to commit the work ethic, the work ethic and the dedication to get it done. So a lot of those components sound like a role model to me, you know, folks that we should look to and honor. And so it's my privilege to present the Minority Enterprise Development Week proclamation to Ms. Adrian James, and we appreciate everything that is being done to grow Onslow County.
We, the Minority Business Services Committee at the Jacksonville-Onslow Chamber of Commerce, would like to thank our Onslow County Commissioners for this proclamation. We appreciate your support that you give us year after year, and we're looking forward to next week as we will be celebrating Minority Enterprise Development Week, and we hope to see you all there. So again, we say thank you. I'm going to turn it over to Lisa, and she's going to give some information.
Hello, everyone. Just a few things. On Tuesday, October 24, we are honoring three Legends of Onslow. Legends of Onslow is what the Chamber has dubbed as kind of the minorities, that significant tribute to the betterment of our community. And we have Ms. Arthen Thomas as one of them, Mr. Jim Roddy, and Master Chief Raymond Appaway, United States Navy, retired, is the final. And then on Tuesday, Wednesday, October 25, we have the Minority Enterprise Development Week luncheon, and we will be honoring the Linda L. Richardson Minority Business Advocate, and Ms. Diana Barnes is our person this year. And we also will honor the minority entrepreneur and Ms. Katrina Carrington of Katrina Carrington CPA is our winner that evening. And then on Saturday, October 28, we will honor First Baptist Church of Belgrade as our next African-American Heritage Trail site marker. It is a 105-year-old congregation in Belgrade that's continuously been together. Those are our events that week, and we also hope that you just patronize minority-owned businesses within Onslow County. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Cotton, Item 5 is the public hearing for the rezoning of these parcels. For the folks that want to speak on this part, this is where, if we hadn't had this part, I would have let you come up and spoke, but since we were having this anyway, it gives you a little bit more time to speak on it anyway. So now we'll call, or he will call, members of the audience when we get to that point for folks to come and speak. Thank you for indulgence.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. First, I'll call on Mr. Ben Warren, our Assistant County Manager, to provide a staff introduction.
Thank you, Mr. Cotton. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Vice Chairman and Commissioners. We have a somewhat unique request before you this evening, and it involves the initial zoning of properties that were formerly located within the City of Jacksonville's extraterritorial jurisdiction, or more properly known as their ETJ. Just to provide a little bit of background, an ETJ area is an area that was historically established to prepare an area for annexation. But in 2012, when the statutes changed, it really took away the power of cities to involuntarily annex those areas, and as such, a lot of cities now have started to turn those ETJ areas back over to the county. And essentially, what that means is that by turning it back over to the county, we assume responsibility for building inspections, for minimum housing, for zoning, and some other similar-type functions. And so in this particular case, what generally happens is if a city decides they no longer want to maintain zoning and building inspections and those authorities over the properties, then they notify the county that they are going to turn those back over or relinquish that authority. And so the City of Jacksonville provided that notice at the beginning of the summer. They've gone through the formal process, and they've held their meetings and adopted a resolution, essentially turning those properties back over to the county. And once that happens, the county has 60 days to go through the public hearing process to enact its own zoning and authority back over those properties. And so tonight's meeting is within that 60-day window. Typically, whenever we do notices for large-scale rezonings such as this, the statutes allow an alternate method for providing notification. And in that situation, what we do, for out-of-town property owners, we send a first-class notification. For in-town property owners, we provide a half-page ad in local newspaper for two consecutive weeks, and then we also post the property. In this particular case, we have 2,765 parcels that are included in the turnover, and so with a situation like that, you can't post a sign on each individual property. And so what we do is we go out to prominent locations at the entrance to developments and in high-visibility areas to post a rezoning notice sign, in hopes that folks will call our office to get more information about what's being proposed. In this case, again, it's 2,765 parcels for a total area of about 1,749 acres. We've got a mixture of zoning districts that are being recommended for these different parcels, and basically what we did is we went in and we looked at the previous City of Jacksonville zoning, and we tried to approximate that as close as we could to minimize any type of disruption and what types of uses or impacts may be on each of the individual properties. And so as we go through these maps, that's what you'll see is, in some of them, it will be an entire, or one zoning district recommended for the entire development. Others, you'll see pockets of different types of zoning, and that approximates as closely as possible what the former City of Jacksonville zoning was on those properties. Just a real quick, I know this is a very busy slide, a very wordy slide, but wanted to just give a general idea of what these different zoning districts allow in the form of density and the types of uses. We have an R-5 and R-10, which are the residential districts we have, that allow the highest density. R-5, minimum lot size of 5,000 square feet and up to 10 units per acre. R-10, 10,000 square feet, four units per acre, and allow both the single-family and multifamily, meaning duplexes, townhomes, apartments, that type of multifamily. R-8M, or any of our zoning districts that have an M at the end, allow manufactured homes. So R-8M, there again, it's a high-density district, allows single-family, multifamily, manufactured homes, and manufactured home parks at a minimum lot size of 8,000 square feet and up to eight units per acre. R-15 and R-20, there again, single-family dwellings are allowed at a density of 15,000 square feet per dwelling unit, excuse me, per parcel. In R-15, 20,000 square foot minimum lot size for R-20. R-30M, minimum lot size of 30,000 square feet, and there again, allows manufactured homes. And then RA. RA is a little bit different district in that it's rural agricultural, but it allows a mixture of non-residential uses that provide general service to our residential areas. And then conservation is just as it sounds, an area that's designed to preserve sensitive environmental areas. So this just provides a general snapshot of where the seven different areas are. We have several different clusters of properties located around the city. The area that's in pink is the primary corporate limits for the City of Jacksonville. You can see some areas that are still shaded in light gray, and that's the balance of the city's remaining extraterritorial jurisdiction. And then we have the seven pockets highlighted in yellow. And so as we go through, we'll start at the very top along Ramsey Road, and we'll work our way clockwise ending up in the southwest area. So the first is off of Ramsey Road. It's the Indian Acres Subdivision Phase 2, and basically we have two different areas, the area along Ramsey Road, some smaller lots, and we're recommending R-15 for that area. Towards the back of the subdivision, we have the larger estate-type lots, and we're recommending R-30M for that area. Our next area is just off of Piney Green Road, and as you can see by the map, it's bordered on the sides by Halltown Road and Wolf Swamp Road, and consists of Country Club Estates, Regal Woods Subdivision, and the Windsor Manor Subdivision. And there again, with this area, you can see to the north, just outside of the heavy boundary, we already have some existing county zoning in the area, some RA that's already in our area right now. So we're carrying a little bit of that RA zoning over, but then the different pockets represent the different subdivisions and the current, or excuse me, the former zoning from the City of Jacksonville. So in R-15, R-10, transitioning to a small pocket of high-density residential. We have a natural area with some conservation in between, and then a little bit larger subdivision to the east that consists of recommended R-20 zoning. Directly south of that area, on the south side of Piney Green Road, we have the Aragona Village Highland Forest Subdivision and White Oak Estates. And there again, with this, most of these subdivisions are pretty well-built out at this point, but with this one, we have some of our larger lots recommended for R-20, transitioning to R-10 with some smaller apartments and townhome-type development for R-5, and just a little bit of conservation area to the south. Next, we have Hunter's Creek Subdivision. Most of this area, again, is already developed. We're transitioning some of the existing R-5 zoning that we have in the county to the higher-density area of the subdivision. On the east side, we have some R-15, some medium-density residential, and then to the east, we have some R-10 for another medium-density residential area. To the south, along Freedom Way at Tomlin Circle, we have a smaller area there. We're basically continuing the existing county R-8M zoning, and this includes the Tomlin Circle Subdivision and portion of Windsor Country Acres Subdivision. As we head to southwest Jacksonville area, we have kind of a spread-out area along Merle Hill Road and Onslow Pines Road with, as you can notice here, between the area that's recommended and Wilmington Highway, there's still a pocket right there that the City of Jacksonville is retaining, the ETJ area. But for our area, it includes the Parkview Acres Subdivision, Sagefield Subdivision, and a lot of heir property and individually-owned properties mixed throughout. So with this, to the left-hand side, we've got some large estate-type lots. We're recommending the RA zoning district, transitioning to R-20 and R-10, then back to RA, and then some R-8M, all the way to the southeast. And finally, we have, in the southwest area, we have an area that consists of Springdale Acres Subdivision, the Southwest Middle School, and then a handful of individually-owned properties. And the bulk of Springfield Acres, we're recommending R-10 and R-5, and then the area, the individually-owned properties, we're transitioning, the existing RA county zoning and R-15 county zoning that would cover those lots. And again, as we looked at the potential recommendations for the different zoning districts, the number-one thing we tried to do was to replicate the former city zoning so that we would minimize any impacts as far as setbacks, uses that were already in place, because one thing we did not want to do was to create a lot of non-conforming-type situations. People who were owned properties that were undeveloped, we certainly didn't want to put an additional burden on those properties, you know, from what they originally anticipated at the time of purchase, for areas where we had some existing developments that were moving forward, tried to reach out to developers to see what their initial plans were so we could continue those forward, and tried to minimize any impact. And so as we look at the consistency with the comprehensive plan, one thing that we looked at was, for areas that were currently not zoned, what the expressed goals and intent of the comprehensive plan were, to make sure we were consistent in that regard as well. And so we felt like the recommendations are consistent with those goals and recommendations. We tried to carry over as much county zoning so that we had seamless boundaries, and we tried to replicate the former City of Jacksonville zoning. And I think that we, based off of those recommendations, we met the stated goals and the expressed intent of the comprehensive plan with the proposed recommendations. As far as reasonableness and public interest, there again, we tried to provide that continuity with the previous City of Jacksonville zoning districts and similarity between the adjacent county zoning that was already in place. So based off of that information, staff recommends approval due to consistency with the comprehensive plan's guiding principles and expressed intent, and the planning board also reviewed this request, and they voted unanimously to recommend approval based upon the consistency with the previous City of Jacksonville zoning, the surrounding zoning of land uses, and the comprehensive plan's guiding principles. And so with that, I'll turn it back over to Mr. Cotton for the public hearing.
Thank you, Ms. Warren. Just a point of clarification. The City of Jacksonville approached the county requesting to divest or relinquish what they were currently, or are currently overseeing and having authority for zoning and building inspections. And by statute, if we're a county that has countywide zoning, we don't have a choice. We are required to accept and match up as closely as we can with our existing zoning.
Yes, sir. You're absolutely correct.
Okay.
With expanding an ETJ, there is a statutory process where they have to make a request to the county to extend that boundary. With a reduction, there really is no choice. They notify us of their intent, they move forward, and then we're bound to accept those properties.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Warren.
Let me ask you a question.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I will move on with the public hearing. I will open the public hearing and start with those that have signed up, and then once all those individuals have spoken, I will make a call to the audience. The first person who has signed up for the public hearing is Mr. Ted Solinsky of 123 Basewood Court.
Good afternoon, good evening. I'm a little bit confused about all of this, and I would have appreciated a little more paperwork. According to this handout here, it states something to the effect of copies of the staff report and supporting documents are attached. Where are they in this? They're not here. So where's the rest of the paperwork? Also, I would like to comment, I live on Aragona Village area, and I would like to say thank you basically to our Sheriff's Department. There for a long, long while, they've always cruised through my neighborhood. There for a long, long while, they've always cruised through my neighborhood, so to speak. And here lately, in the last month or so, I haven't seen any of them. I don't know if it's because of the construction that's going on on Piney Green Road, maybe they've got more duties to, you know, to help with the construction and such as that. Maybe that's possible. But I'm a little, I'm really confused about this ETJ. Basically, what I can understand is that the city wanted to propose to annex our neighborhoods into the city area, and this was one of the steps they had to do to do that. And now they're basically backing away from doing that. So are we going to have a difference in the protections and the utilities and such as that that have been going on in our neighborhood, or is it going to remain the same like it has been? And I just wish there was more written paperwork concerning this situation. I'm a little bit disillusioned because of that statement I just read. It's over here on page three, and would like to know, is there more paperwork that was supposed to have been presented today with this form here, or what's going on with that? And I just would like to get a lot more answers than what I'm getting. Also, that's a reserve comment for everything else. This is just about the rezoning, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next individual is Mr. Kevin Harvey, 107 Accord Court.
I'm going to reset my speaking opportunity. I got clarification from the gentleman earlier that about what I want to speak about.
Okay. All right. Yes, sir. The next individual is Ms. Stewart.
Yes, I was going to speak. I told the chair I wanted to speak. I'm coming from, I live in Kansas Spring, Andrews Air Force Base. I received this letter about a week and a half ago, so I just threw on something yesterday. Me and my husband rolled out. I'm concerned about the ETJ, the yellow section. Can somebody explain it to me? The yellow section? ETJ?
We can't speak right now. Once you're done, then we're allowed, we're allowed to speak.
Tell us, just explain to us what you want to say, and then we'll, I'm sure all your questions will be answered, but we had a point where we have to hear what the public's got to say, and then we'll respond after that.
Right. Were you planning to redesign the area, or, you know, the ones in color, are you planning to, you know? If you are, it would be easy to buy us out. I'm tired of paying taxes myself. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay. Those are all the individuals who have signed up. I will make a call to the audience if anyone would like to speak on the public hearing this evening. Could you step to the podium, please? Ma'am, step to the podium.
I think the way this was done, as far as notification to the homeowners, obviously, this veteran got a notification in writing and drove down here with her spouse to be at this hearing, and all we seen was a poster on the side of the road in my neighborhood. And nothing was sent to us exactly what the meeting was about. Are we being sucked into the city and paying higher taxes, or is this just about rezoning the neighborhood? What is this about? We don't know. And I mean, I think it's sad, as city council members and tax collectors, we have every homeowner on record, tax information and their address, and obviously, if they're out of town, they're out of town. Okay? People got to be represented, and it's taxation without representation by not giving people the proper information to come to the meeting and be prepared to speak intelligently, because we weren't notified what was going on here with the zoning. Are we being sucked into the city? And why are we going to be paying higher taxes? For what services? What are we going to get in return for those taxes? I think that's what people here would like to know, as hard-working veterans and Americans. People moved into this county because we did not want to pay taxes. A lot of people are retired military out there. You have a lot of retired civil service living out there, just a lot of retired people, period, on a fixed income, and now you're looking at doubling taxes and services. That impacts people's budgets and their livelihoods, and we need to be aware of what decisions are being made on our behalf when we're not getting the proper information. And that's all I would like to say. I think it's pretty piss-poor, in my opinion, and the government runs this way in this county, as a homeowner in this area, and someone who retired here after 22 years serving in the military. I think it's piss-poor.
I'll make another call to the audience. State your name, please, for a record.
Laura Moriori. I am a retired Marine Corps vet, and my husband had died on me, so I'm raising my son by myself, living in that area. I'm living on a limited budget, and then you're going to tax me, and I'm not going to even have any money to live. I'm just going to be paying bills, just looking at my grass. And I don't appreciate the, I'm not going to have any other benefits, because the road that we have out there now with Piney Green Road is already sucking up a lot of extra gas, just because I have to go out of my way to turn around to go the opposite direction. And then I have to come, then to get to another neighborhood, I have to go down all the way down to another turnaround to come all the way back to almost close to where I live, just to get into another neighborhood. That road is like, and that's the benefits I'm going to get from being in the city. I don't want to be a part of that.
Would anyone else like to speak on the pub? Okay.
My name is Lillian Husk. I live at 514 Edwards Road. It was my understanding that the city, originally, we were annexing, and the only reason why we had to go through the city is to get our permits and all that stuff, and the county. Now, we don't have to do that anymore. We can just go to the county to get our permits. It has nothing to do with our taxes going up or anything. It only, they're only coding all this stuff as our either rural area, agriculture area, housing area, or whatever. Has nothing to do with changing our property taxes, is what I'm understanding. Right? Thank you.
Does anyone else like to speak? All right. At this time, I will close the public hearing. And just one point of clarification for Commissioner discussion. This is actually the opposite of moving forward with an annexation. The city of Jacksonville is actually removing itself from oversight in these areas. It would just, it will just be county planning and zoning from this point forward for those areas that are being, taking out of the city of Jacksonville's ETJ. Now, the item is available for Commissioner discussion.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to go first.
Just a minute, let me talk to Ben again.
In just a second. Let me, let me, I think I can help out a little bit, and even Ben can help me out a whole bunch more. What happened years ago was that the city would do an ETJ, and then they would annex you. They can't do that anymore by statute. By statute says it has to be voted on by the people of Onslow County to vote you into annexation. The city can't do that, so that's why they're giving up these ETJs and giving them back to us, and it's not going to be any change. There's no tax increase whatsoever. You'll still have the same services, except you'll be underneath the county's jurisdiction, is what it amounts to. And the sheriff still has a jurisdiction in the ETJ, and he does all that anyhow. The city, the police officers do not go into ETJ. They have to only go into the annexationed areas, so that helps you out a little bit. Well, the communication is what they did earlier, was posted in a newspaper. We posted signs out in the facilities, and tonight, you've seen all the prints that we have here, all the yellow areas that were taken back into the county. The communications that we have has been very well-done by what we've seen by our county people and our staff. Our staff works very hard at this, and that's what they've done. You have nothing to worry about.
As it is, as it is now, ETJ is extraterritorial jurisdiction, and the biggest complaint I had is the folks that live like you, that live in the ETJs, they were being regulated by people they couldn't vote for, like the city council. You didn't pay city taxes, but you were regulated by them. The cities are giving up these ETJs because annexation is not viable for them anymore, so they're giving these territories back up. So basically, you're coming back under the county's zoning rules, which is very similar, if not sometimes more lenient than the city rule, except when you call for an inspection, you'll just call for a county inspector to come out there to do an inspection, or for rezoning, you'd have to address the county. But at least now, you're being regulated zoning-wise by people that you can vote for. If we don't do what you think's right, you can fire us. That's part of what you go to the poll for. But in the ETJ, you're regulated by people you can't vote for, if that makes any sense.
Yeah, I just want to say that the explanation they gave is right on, so we got rid of that confusion, but I'm going beyond that. I think, I think you have a point with the communication. I've been listening to that, okay? Not everybody reads the paper. I get it. I mean, there's some, you miss things, and that's something that we'll probably address, because you need to get this information, because one speaker already had his issue clarified, okay? Should have been clarified before he got here. That's my point. So I understand that there was a lack of communication on probably both ends, and that's something I personally, you know, look into as far as how we get the information out to you, because we're getting everybody's blood pressure up for nothing, because there's a big misperception, obviously. So there should have been a better venue to advertise this and explain what exactly is going on, so that there's no confusion. So I do appreciate your input in that respect. I was listening intently to what you were saying.
There is no tax. You still pay county property tax, just like you always have, and you still get the county services like you always have, except you don't be using city services. Did any of you want to talk to Mr. Warren again?
No, I think we're good. I make a motion to approve. A second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion on the?
Chairman, chairman's just a point of clarification. Commissioners?
Let's close the public hearing, don't we?
No. Is your motion to adopt the statement of consistency and consider approval of the proposed zoning districts?
That's correct.
On both of those? Thank you.
Yes.
Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries. General Items Number Six, I believe that's Mr. Chris White.
Good evening, Commissioners. In 2008, Onslow County initiated the process of establishing an air traffic control tower at Albert J. Ellis Airport. We've done much study, design, planning, and seeking of funds. We're finally at the point where we'll do construction. This project is funded approximately 45% by the NCDOT, 35% by the FAA, and a final 20% by airport. It is respectfully requested that the Board of Commissioners approve the amended project ordinance and any associated budget amendments, and authorize the chairman to sign on behalf of the county.
Motion to approve. Second.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Section B.
Item B is the RS&amp;H Work Authorization Number Three for Air Traffic Control Tower Construction Administration Resident Inspection Services. This is also associated with the control tower project. It is respectfully requested that the Board of Commissioners approve RS&amp;H Work Authorization Number Three for the CARI services for the air traffic control tower project, and authorize the chairman to sign on behalf of the county.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, or any discussion? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries.
Okay. Item C, which is the award of the construction contract for the air traffic control tower project. The airport bid the project, or Onslow County bid the project, and received three bids, and the lowest responsible responsive bid came from Daniels and Daniels Construction Company of Goldsboro in the amount of $4,991,655. It is respectfully requested that the Board of Commissioners award the contract to Daniels and Daniels Construction Company Incorporated in the amount of $4,991,655, and authorize the chairman to sign on behalf of the county.
Motion to approve.
Motion and a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries. Next section, Mr. White.
Item D, this is, this is an exciting project for the airport as well, which is the food, beverage, and specialty retail concession at the Albert J. Ellis Airport. On August 14, 2017, the Albert J. Ellis Airport received two proposals in response to an RFP for food, beverage, and specialty retail. This is a concession agreement for 10 years with a five-year option. A committee comprised of airport advisory commission members, airport county staff, reviewed the proposals, received presentations, and recommends the concession be awarded to Barton Inc. of Jacksonville. Both companies presented competitive proposals. However, the Barton Inc. proposal provided a national brand, Honey Baked Ham, a more diverse menu, and a higher percentage of gross sales paid to the county. Barton Inc. LLC has provided interim concessions at the airport for almost two years and has performed well and exceeded revenue projections consistently. It is respectfully requested that the Board of Commissioners award the concession agreement to Barton Inc. of Jacksonville LLC, and authorize the chairman to sign the agreement on behalf of the county.
Motion to approve.
Motion second. My second. Honey baked ham, is that, how did we land them, and they are the only one in anywhere that I noticed in an airport?
Yes, that is correct. This, the Honey Baked Ham at our airport is the only one in the nation, and Honey Baked Ham Corporate is very interested in expanding that, and they have been very pleased with the past two years' performance here. I guess we're just lucky.
All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Section E, USO lease.
Yes. USO of North Carolina leased with the Albert J. Ellis Airport in Onslow County. In 2015, the USO opened a travel center at OAJ. They have been on annual lease, and the terms of lease remain at $1 per month for the operation of the USO, in consideration for their staffing of the information desk on behalf of Onslow County, as well as the services they provide to our uniformed service members. It is respectfully requested that the Board of Commissioners consider approval of a five-year lease, and authorize the chairman to sign on behalf of the county.
Motion. Motion and a second. Any discussion? So USO is a really valuable asset. I see it at all airports, and it's very well frequently used at our airport also.
Well over 1,000 people.
Very busy.
So that's really a good addition to our services out there. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, have it. Section F.
I'm not going to try and pronounce this, but SEDA has provided digital in-flight and ground communication services for multiple airlines for many years. SEDA has had equipment located at OAJ for well over a decade, and with the construction of the new passenger terminal building, the equipment relocated to the executive terminal. SEDA has requested a five-year lease versus their annual agreement. It is respectfully requested that the Board of Commissioners consider approval of the five-year lease to SEDA, and authorize the chairman to sign on behalf of the county.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
Motion to approve and a second. All, any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. Section G, airfield improvements.
And the final three items that I have for you this evening are project closeouts. This is where we essentially true up the books when a project gets done. The first one is the 2013 Airfield Improvements Project Closeout. It is respectfully requested that the Board of Commissioners approve the amended project ordinance and close out the project, and authorize the chairman to sign on behalf of the county.
Seven.
Motion second. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Section H.
The Airport Beacon Refurbishment Project Closeout. It is respectfully requested that the Board of Commissioners approve the amended project ordinance and close out the project, and authorize the chairman to sign on behalf of the county.
Seven.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Section I.
The Automated Weather Observation System Project Closeout. This is one that's actually kind of interesting. The FAA actually funded this project completely, did the work themselves, so we're closing out the project without having to spend, spend any money. So... So it is respectfully requested the Board of Commissioners approve the amended project ordinance and close out the project, and authorize the chairman to sign on behalf of the county.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve and a second.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? I will say this for the public that's here tonight. Our airport is self-sustaining, is enterprise fund. All the funds that have been voted on and approved tonight come from either FAA or grants, or generated from user fees, and I thank you for being ahead on that, sir. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Nutrition contract by Ms. Christine Kennett.
Good evening, chairman, vice chairman, commissioners, county manager, deputy county Here to present the nutrition contract tonight. This contract between Onslow County and Gibbs Management Services Incorporated will allow senior services to continue our congregate and home-delivered meals programs. The contract provides delivery of prepackaged foods for home-delivered meals, as well as the meals for all five congregate nutrition sites in Jacksonville, Richland, Sneets Ferry, Swansboro, and Belgrade. Clients are assessed on an annual basis for eligibility under the guidelines of the Division of Aging and Adult Services. Onslow County solicited bids for this service in August 2017. Gibbs Management Services Incorporated was the lowest responsible bidder at that time. The contract extends to the end of the fiscal year 2018, and is written to extend up to four additional one-year terms. This service is reimbursed through the Home and Community Care Block grant. We respectfully request that the Board of Commissioners approve the contract and authorize the chairman to sign the necessary and appropriate documents on behalf of the county.
Is this a company that we've used before, or...?
Yes, sir. Currently, they are serving us in the interim as our emergency food vendor.
Motion to approve.
Motion and a second.
Second.
I did have another question, though. Did any Onslow County companies bid?
Yes, sir, we did have one. That would be Platinum Corral, and they came in slightly higher than Gibbs Management. They were our lowest responsible bidder. Other than that, there was no reason for the selection.
Right. And it's my understanding that the meals that are served are dictated in your schedule, so that, I mean, there's not flexibility for the company to serve what they want to, they have to serve what's in your menu?
Correct. Our menus are dictated in our bid, or in our proposal, I'm sorry. They're dictated in our proposal. So the vendors have to go by...any vendor who wants to bid has to go specifically by the menus that are outlined in our proposal, and that's because the Division of Aging and the USDA are very strict, and they provide very stringent rules when it comes to using fresh foods over canned foods, low salt, no fat, that sort of thing. So we use a nutritionist, and...
What was the low bid for...?
The lowest bid was four eighty-five, and we had to exclude that bid because they wanted to use their own menus. The second lowest bid was five sixty-one, cost per meal, and, I'm sorry, that's incorrect. The next lowest bid was Gibbs Management. That was five dollars and fifty cents. Platinum Corral was five dollars and sixty-one cents.
I have a quick question on that. These meals that are being delivered, and obviously you said Gibbs is the lowest contract bidder, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Is there any oversight to ensure that they're getting the proper meals? I mean, is there a committee or somebody that oversees that they're following what's a result of their contract?
Absolutely. That's done in multiple ways. We have five nutrition site managers that oversee the meals each day they come in. They have to check them for quality and temperature. They make sure that everything that's on the menu for that day was, in fact, delivered, or if there was a substitution, it was reported in advance so that we could make sure it was good with the nutritionist. In addition to that, we have sheets where we go out and we audit the vendors, in this case, the nutrition vendor, where we'll go out and we go to his place, and we go to see where he cooks, and we go to his kitchen, and we make sure that he's doing what he's supposed to, and that he's got a clean kitchen. So we don't just rely on his health codes, we're going out to see what he's doing.
Is there means testing for this service? The customers, do they...?
They love it. They are very pleased with the new vendor. They're happy with the food.
Is it open to anyone? Is it just an age limit, or how do you...?
You have to be sixty to receive a meal at no charge.
Well, you're there, Royce. Not yet, man. Getting close, getting close.
I'll tell you, I'll tell you, the folks that receive these meals, that's going to be the most measuring stick, because they'll tell you right quick if they're good or not.
Certainly do. They're not shy.
They pretty...they don't hold back if there's something wrong with them, I can tell you that. Been there and done that with some of the folks in past server or contracts that we've had.
Yeah, the reason why I ask that question, because my father's in assisted living home, and believe me, I make sure that it's a food...of course, I taste it, but I make sure the food is being served properly for him, because of his age. I'd really hate for something to happen to him, you know what I mean? So I appreciate the work and the effort and your explanation for that.
Well, the idea is it's supposed to keep them healthy, and if they don't like it, they won't eat it. If it doesn't taste good, it's not going to nourish their bodies, because they won't eat it. So taste is one of the first things we look at, and we have to taste it ourselves.
Believe me, my dad lets me know.
For him.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion to award this contract to Gibbs Management Services, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. We are going to take a ten-minute break. So my fellow commissioners are telling me. I'd like to call the meeting back to order. Thank you for your indulgence in allowing a short break. We'll move on now to item K. Mr. Harry Smith, our tax administrator.
Vice chairman, commissioners. The tax office, as well as a number of other county departments, routinely utilize aerial photography in our normal processes and special projects. In the past, we've used standard ortho photos, which are vertical photos that kind of give a straight-down view looking at properties. Pictometry has been an industry leader in new technology, which captures oblique aerial photos, which provide users the ability to view structures from an angled view from all four sides, providing much greater detail and enabling advanced features such as measuring tools. Low-level oblique images, such as those provided by pictometry, have also been approved as an alternative to on-site inspections according to International Association of Assessing Officers Mass Appraisal Standards. Ability to use pictometry's aerial images will greatly enhance productivity in completing future county-wide reappraisal projects by enabling our appraisers to conduct more frequent periodic reviews, as well as providing the benefit for other county departments. The proposal before you tonight is for pictometry to conduct two flights. The initial flight would occur in early 2018, with a second flight in 2022. The agreement includes a non-appropriation clause whereby the second flight may be canceled if funding is not available. Funds to cover the cost of seventy-five thousand, two twenty for fiscal year 2017-18 were included in this year's budget, and the county will be responsible for additional funds for the remaining one fifty, four forty, to cover the additional cost of the first flight over the next two fiscal year budgets. The initial flight also includes pictometry sketch check product, which identifies discrepancies between the oblique images provided by pictometry and our existing building sketches that we have in our database, and this enables us to prioritize properties that need verification. Just to illustrate what the difference is between the oblique images that we're proposing to obtain and the standard ortho images, which we've been using, on your screen you see a standard ortho image, which is our flat aerials, and we can see there's a fairly large building located in this parcel, but it doesn't really tell us a whole lot about it. When we flip to what pictometry would be providing, this is a north-facing oblique, you can see it's at a forty-five-degree angle. Rather than just seeing one roof line there, we see that the center part of this building is actually a two-story structure. There's a covered entrance area on the front of the building, and we look at another angle at the back of the building, we see that it's not all business, living area, it's not all heated area, but part of it is a covered parking area, and then some type of garage or storage building. Looks like a garage door on the bottom right. There's another illustration. These came from Guilford County's presentation of a nice structure, and you can see out in the backyard behind the pool, it looks like a commercial outdoor kitchen has been installed back there. Just another example of the usefulness for looking at large buildings or properties which have very limited access. Sometimes our appraisers go out, and there's fences in the way, or they can't get in the backyards, and this would also enable them to view those properties without having to actually visit them. The sketch change product that comes with it would identify additions that appear to have been made to the property that are not showing up in our current sketches, and these are actually comparing them to an older aerial photo. But in this project, with the picture to the left, you can see that there's a covered addition that extends downward, which is not on the picture to the right, which would be what we'd be looking at compared to our existing data. And another example, the main structure appears to have no change or variance, but the structure in the back appears to be something that has been converted from a garage to living quarters. Garage doors are not there, but there's windows in the front of that structure at this point. And also, it would help us locate parcels where there may have been some construction, but for whatever reason, the permit didn't come through our office, or maybe it was built without a permit, so it would identify those parcels also for review. Although we don't know exactly what the return on investment would be, speaking with other jurisdictions that have employed this technology, they have seen a significant return on their initial investment. This slide came from Guilford County's presentation. They estimated that it saved them nearly one point six million dollars on their most recent reappraisal. They came up with that figure by stating that their current reappraisal, their most recent reappraisal, cost them thirteen dollars and fifty cent per parcel, and they were comparing that to North Carolina Department of Revenue's average reappraisal cost of twenty-one dollars per parcel. Of course, they have a lot more parcels than we do. Additionally, just by finding structures that were built when utilizing the project, they added enough value to generate an additional one point three six nine million dollars in revenue for a total benefit of two point nine four four million dollars. And like I said, we wouldn't know what the exact benefit may be to Onslow County, but we could expect to recoup a significant portion of our investment as well. The specific action requested is that the board consider approval of the pictometry contract in the amount of three eighty-six, seven ninety-five, fifty, which consists of two twenty-five, six sixty for the first flight, which would take place in 2018, and the remaining one sixty-one, one thirty-five, fifty for a second flight, and authorize the chairman to sign on behalf of the county. And once again, the initial budget impact for the current fiscal year is seventy-five thousand, two hundred and twenty dollars, which was approved in the budget, and the remaining one fifty, four forty would be due to be paid over the next two fiscal years, fiscal year eighteen, nineteen, and nineteen twenty. And if you have any questions, I'll be glad to try to answer them for you.
This money's not all due right now, it's in increments of different budget years.
Right. The first flight would be payable over three fiscal year period at seventy-five, two twenty each.
What other agencies would this benefit in the county or a city, or...?
It could be used by law enforcement, could be used by emergency responders, planning, development, probably others also. I know those are some of the ones that have participated in demonstrations in the past and had expressed an interest in using this project, this product, if it was available. As you can see from some of those photos, you can kind of see entrances and exits on buildings. The demo I went to last month up in Charlotte, they, or a user group meeting actually, they had their emergency responders do a presentation where one of the dispatchers was actually looking at, excuse me, looking at pictometry on their screen while they're directing an ambulance, how to get into a driveway to provide assistance to a toddler that had fallen in a swimming pool behind the structure, and the dispatcher was asking the homeowner that was calling, and the call was, "That big oak tree still there on the right-hand side of your driveway? Can ambulance fit into that?"
Will this just be a new GIS layer?
It will not be a new GIS layer, though would be a public view available through GIS, and our technical folks over here can answer those questions better than I can. But what most jurisdictions do is provide a public view where you can see some of the data, but you wouldn't have access to the tools that we would have internally to use it as far as doing measurements and that type of thing. But it would be available for government entities, the county, other county departments, and the towns to also utilize this technology.
Would the purchase of this, of these photos, would this company, would it ensure that we wouldn't have to hire any additional personnel in the tax department?
Well, one of the reasons I requested this is because under our current staffing level, we have basically the same number of appraisers as we did fourteen years ago, and I started in Onslow County, and we have twenty thousand more parcels now. You can basically double your production as far as property reviews by utilizing a product like this, rather than having to hire additional people. So looking down the road, I feel like we wouldn't have to hire any additional appraisers if we were able to obtain this, to still reduce the amount of time it takes us to completely review all the parcels in the county.
Harry, how often will we have this updated so we'll have current information about or photography work for current projects?
Well, this proposal was for doing two flights, and the idea was to do the initial one in 2018, which is, excuse me, also our reappraisal year, and the second flight in 2022 on the current schedule that the state has been following for the standard orthos that we've been getting. The last flight we had was in 2016, so if we get this in 2018, if the state continues, they would have another flight in 2020, so we would essentially have new aerial photos every two years, if we choose to keep going forward on a four-year cycle.
If we locate structures that was built that didn't have a permit, or they wasn't issued a permit, we'll pick that up, and that's how we'll pick up the additional revenue. How about, would they then be required to go to Ben's office and talk to them about permits that maybe they did or didn't get?
That's a discussion we could have internally. My understanding right now, in recent discussions with some of the planning staff, is if we...our appraisers don't routinely report everything they see out in the field, just because it would probably be a ton of stuff, but if there appears to be some type of safety issue or health issue, then we would let them know about it. We could maybe possibly develop a process where we would report those improvements also, and they could check to see if a permit had been issued, and use that information however they may want to.
If an agency wanted this information, say Jacksonville, or one of the municipalities, or the sheriff needed it for an operation he was doing, would we have to, would you have to give it to them, or is there a website that they can pull this up?
There are, I believe, a hundred uselizations come with the project, so we could assign those. Our IT department would handle that, I'm sure, as far as whoever needed access to it, to be able to assign those user rights.
So we'd know who's actually using it and have some...
Would the cost of future flights be at a locked-in rate, or would it fluctuate? Would it be likely to go up in the future?
It would...well, I don't know for sure. It would be likely to go up. The reason we did the contract for two flights was because there was a discount offered if we signed up for two flights, and with the non-appropriations clause, if we got one and decided we didn't want to move forward with the second one, we would just not appropriate funds, and we wouldn't be obligated for that second fight. I've been getting proposals from them over the years, and I have never seen it go down, so I would expect it would be an increase in the future, because the only thing we're locking in would be the first two flights with this agreement. locking in is would be the first two fights with this agreement.
Is there any other company that performs this service, or does this company have the corner on it?
I think they're, they're the leader, I would say. They are also a business partner with Tyler Technologies, which is our appraisal software computer provider, so we feel like there would be a pretty seamless integration with being able to access the Pictometry product through the Tyler system. After the state did the fights back in 2016, we did request and get a proposal from the company that did the standard fights for the state, and as I recall, I don't know the exact figure, but it seems like that proposal was actually higher than the quote that we got from Pictometry. There are other companies doing, I'm not sure how many, I think that was Sanborn, was it Sanborn? Sanborn.
Make a motion to approve the Pictometry contract.
Motion and second. Your second.
Second.
A motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you, gentlemen.
Motion carries, thank you. Thank you, Harry. Section L.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. I have before you this evening a change order for Phase Three of the Consolidated Human Services Building Project. The Consolidated Human Services Agency project has been completed in phases. The construction phase was completed and staff were able to begin serving the public in the new facility in April of this year. The contract for the final phase was awarded in October of 2016 to Quadrant Construction Incorporated. In this phase, the Sexton Building was raised and Engrade Parking was completed for staff and visitors. Abatement and demolition of the old help facility began in May of 2017. During this process, additional materials requiring abatement were identified. The existing floor was concealing almost 3,000 square feet of floor tiles that required abatement, and there were, the existing floor, excuse me, and the crawl space walls and ceiling, an additional 4,320 linear feet of thermal system insulation, or TSI, was identified that required abatement. These areas were not accessible when the testing was done prior to the bid going out because they required destructive testing. In other words, they had to destroy walls and floors to get to them, and we were still serving the public in the facility at that time. The change order in the amount of $173,049 includes the additional cost associated with this abatement. The funds for the change order are within the project budget for the Phase Three of the Consolidated Human Services Building Capital Project Ordinance. I am happy to answer any questions you have. The specific request, action requested is that the Board of Commissioners consider approval of Change Order Two for Phase Three of the Consolidated Human Services Project in the amount of $173,049, and authorize the county manager to sign associated documents.
Motion to approve, and you answered my question because, you know, I'm gonna get a phone call in the morning.
Yes, sir.
It's inside the ordinance, so we're okay.
It's inside the project budget, yes, sir.
Thank you.
I'll second the motion.
Motion and a second, any discussion? We just can't predict what we find underneath buildings and hidden behind walls, so we have to, when we demolish in some of the older buildings, we have to take that into consideration, and somebody, maybe Mr. Cotton was smart enough to know that we were maybe have a contingency to address this, and we surely did, and I thank you for that. Thank you, Mr. Cotton. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Ms. Angela Lee. Intervention funding.
Thank you. Good evening, Chairman, Vice Chair, Commissioners, and Mr. Cotton. In 2014, 137 Onslow County residents were hospitalized due to asthma. Many in our community, especially children, struggle with this health issue. To assist communities in North Carolina to help mitigate common triggers for asthma, the Chronic Disease and Injury Section of the North Carolina Department of Public Health is providing funding to five local health departments with the goal of reducing absenteeism, emergency department visits, hospitalizations, and medical care costs. Funding will allow staff travel for training, development of referral systems, implementation of an evidence-based asthma assessment program, education, and follow-up visits for our patients. The $4,000 of funding will allow the health department to provide enhanced support services to families that are impacted or potentially will be impacted by asthma. No matching funds are required. It's respectfully requested that the Board of Commissioners accept the additional funding through the Healthy Communities Agreement addendum.
Motion to approve. Motion to approve.
Second.
And a second, any discussion? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you.
State, local funding for navigational maintenance, Mr. Cotton.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. The town of Emerald Isle has really been the leader in the Bogue Inlet Navigation Maintenance dredging effort over the years that I've been affiliated with Onslow County. Historically, when funds had become available and the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers has worked it into their schedule, we have partnered with the town of Swansboro, Carteret County, Emerald Isle, Cedar Point, and others in that area to provide that local match. Right now, what we're looking at is a total of $300,000, $200,000 would come from outside agencies, and the $100,000 match would be broken up 50%, from Onslow County, and 50% from Carteret County. There's really no magic formula to how the Onslow County portion is divided, other than Swansboro does represent a small portion of the Bogue Inlet area, and obviously Onslow County would make up the lion's share of that landmass outside of that. So the request tonight is that of that 50-50 split, that $47,500 be appropriated from our tourism funds, which we do have available to make the match, and then also to let you know, Swansboro has already taken action to allocate $2,500 for their requested match. Do you have Mr. Frank Rush, he is the Town Manager of Emerald Isle, if you had any specific questions, since he has more of a historical knowledge of this process, because he's, you know, like I said, he's been heading this up on behalf of, you know, Carteret County, Onslow County for as long as I've been here.
I would make the motion to approve this, but we've got to do something different. This Band-Aid effect has got to stop. It's just not working, and I have a good friend of mine here about two weeks ago put his upside down in that inlet, a very good friend of mine, a very good navigator, a very good boatsman, and he put his upside down because of the shallowness of the inlet. We've got to do something different. We've got to figure out a way to keep that open, but I don't, I think, you know, and the problem we get into, and Mr. Rush has been with us, with me before on these issues, is that they bring in the, what they call a sidecast dredge, and that thing doesn't work. I mean, it pulls it out and pushes it right back in again when the water, the tide changes. The hopper dredge is the best one to work for right now, and I don't know what they're bringing into that inlet right now, but the hopper dredge does better because it'll come in, it picks it up from the bottom, it takes it out in the ocean and dumps it. But the sidecast just dumps it off to the side and it'll come right back in again. I mean, I've seen it in New River Inlet and the Bogue Inlet also, but I will make the motion to approve it.
Motion and a second.
Second.
Any further discussion? That inlet is really a main focus for Onslow County because we have commercial fishermen out of Swansboro, and if the inlet is blocked, then that commercial fisherman or that recreational fisherman, they have to drive all the way to Morehead City to get out, or run their boat down to Sneed's Ferry or New River Inlet, which is most of the time just as bad. So we're caught with trying to do what we can to try to help out Swansboro, help out Emerald Isle, help out our inlets, our commercial fishermen, and our recreational fishermen, and this money that's being used is tourism money that's collected for use for tourism, it's not out of the property tax coffers. So that is really a win-win to try to keep, I do agree with Commissioner Buchanan though, something needs to be done on a permanent basis to try to shore up those inlets so that the sand don't wash right back into the waterway, it just starts all over again, and then you spend money that's really just washing back and forth in the inlet. Motion and a second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Appointment of the county attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. On April 18th of 2016, the board made a motion to immediately move from an in-house county attorney to an attorney on retainer. The General Statute 153A, Tac 114, states that the Board of Commissioners shall appoint a county attorney at its pleasure and to be its legal advisor. During the December 5th, 2016 Board of Commissioners organizational meeting, the board obviously appointed Mr. Brett DeSalms as the interim attorney. It is respectfully requested that the Onslow County Board of Commissioners consider approving a resolution and contract for professional services for Mr. Brett J. DeSalms to serve as the Onslow County Attorney and authorize the chairman to sign on behalf of the county.
Make a motion.
Second.
Big second.
Motion and a second, any discussion?
Hey, I just want to say one thing about Brett, actually for the whole staff for that matter, I mean, we're very fortunate to get two individuals, our county manager and our interim attorney now, our attorney, and of course, we have our new assistant chair. We have been very fortunate, and as far as Brett is concerned, I can't, I can't say enough about you. Anytime we needed advice, anytime we had a question, he was Johnny on the spot. You pick up the phone, and I'll run a scenario by him, and within 20 minutes to an hour, or if he needed more time to do his research, which I, by the way, tremendously respect, he does his research, it's probably one of the best choices we ever made, and I am really happy to have you appointed as our attorney. I think you're, I think you're doing fantastic.
It's still a contract on a yearly basis, so it's not something that's actually, you're not an employee, but it's a contract, want to make that clear to the public, even though he is the county attorney. And I went out talking to all the employees, I talked to the commissioners, I was trying to find something bad about him, trying to find something that I could hang my hat on, and I couldn't find a thing. So I commend you, Brett, and Commissioner Knapp is absolutely right, every time we've had a question or needed to get it with you, you've been available, and we appreciate that, and that's what we look for in a representative for our legal department, and the information you give has been right on the money, so I really think you've done a good job and continue to do that, sir. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Okay, we're going now to the added agenda item, six P, leasing. I think Mr. Warren, go try this one more time.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. At our last Board of Commissioners meeting, we began discussions on the possibility of leasing county assets. The primary discussion was surrounding the leasing of bleachers, and at that time, there was some discussion as to whether or not we had any surplus bleachers within our inventory that may be available for sale. Since that time, we've gone back and conducted additional research, and as it turns out, we do not have any additional bleachers that would be available for surplus. The bleachers that we have that are currently not assigned to ball fields are ones that we use for special events and other things that are ongoing throughout the year, so they are heavily used and would certainly not be recommended for surplusing or for sale. As we continue to conduct research on our existing county assets or the bleachers and looked for additional alternatives or options that may be available for the leasing of bleachers or other county assets, there are a couple of things that raise some red flags or brought concerns to our attention. One of those being that renting a county asset would establish a precedent that could be applied to other county assets beyond just bleacher rentals. And we talked with the county attorney about, you know, what the implications would be, or what our availability or options would be for restricting it to just a single asset, or restricting this asset to a single group of users or a single group of sites to be able to use the assets, and that creates some concerns as far as not allowing the assets to be used by certain groups or certain individuals on certain locations, and it could possibly present some legal challenges. Another concern we had was the liability concerns with staff having to move the bleachers to be set up, not just on school sites, but potentially private properties and moving these assets up and down the county roads. And so those are a couple of concerns that came up that we have identified as part of this process. We don't really have any solutions to offer at this point, but wanted to make you aware of the concerns that were raised through our research in this process. And I'd be happy to answer any questions the board may have based on our research or other questions you have on these assets.
Anybody got any questions, Mr. Warren? Mr. Board's pleasure.
Motion to approve a leasing of the county asset of bleachers.
This is the first one, right?
Yep.
Have a motion on the floor. Your second.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion?
I'm really opposed to leasing county assets. I understand the issue there is, as a matter of fact, since we talked about this at the last meeting, there was, there's a business person in Jacksonville who's informed me that he's gonna buy bleachers and rent them. There are gonna be other options besides the county going into the leasing of equipment business, and if anybody wants to talk to me after the meeting, I'll tell you who to call. But I just can't see that it's the county's place to go into this business. It will be competing with private enterprise in Onslow County if we do this, and it presents a liability issue that we don't need. So that's the way I feel about it.
The, I would note that the bleachers will be placed on school property, not private property, so you wouldn't have that issue involved. It's all the games for the rec leagues are played right there at Southwest High School Practice Field, and so it wouldn't be moved on private property or shouldn't have to
Call a question.
All in favor of the motion to approve signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Noes, have it, we won't get into the lease business. Thank you, Mr. Warren.
Thank you.
Item Q, Q motion, we don't have a rate, we don't need to set a rate, so. Motion to deny. Section Q.
Second.
Second. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Thank you, now we'll move on to manager's comment.
Mr. Chairman, we have second public comment.
Oh, public, I'm sorry. Robin was trying to tell me about that.
Yes, sir.
I weren't, I weren't listening.
Sorry. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, this is the second public comment period. In accordance with the board's adopted rules of procedures, commissioners shall reserve response, if any, for the commissioner's comment period on the agenda. Comments may be on any issue upon which the Board of Commissioners has control. During the second public comment period, citizens can address the board for up to five minutes each. Mr. Solinsky has, has signed up for the second public comment period. Mr. Solinsky?
I'll add one more if you don't mind.
Okay.
All right.
Okay. No one else has signed up, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Now we get to the manager's comment.
I won't belabor the meeting, I have no comments for this evening.
Okay, well, commissioner's comment, we'll start with Commissioner Price.
Understand the concerns that people expressed about during the public hearing, and hopefully we can, I don't know if we ran that on our website about the zoning issue, maybe that's another area we could advertise that to keep the public informed, so perhaps that's something that we can look into to clear up any misunderstandings. But I appreciate everyone coming out this evening. Tomorrow, we do have a groundbreaking at 2:00 just across the road over here for the Skills Center, Onslow County Skills Center. I think this is gonna be a major asset to Onslow County, be able to transition kids with the skills that they need to transition straight into straight into the workforce. Once that's completed, that's gonna be great. They're gonna be able to get some skills and not necessarily have to go somewhere else. And they can just go straight into the workforce once they acquire those skills. So that's gonna be awesome. Another thing, I just wanted to congratulate my former boss, Mr. Tim Foster, Southwest High School's Onslow County Principal of the Year, just announced here recently. So congratulations, Mr. Foster, for being Principal of the Year. And have a good evening.
Thank you, Commissioner Price. Commissioner Buchanan?
Thank you. Ben Warren, congratulations on being sworn in as one of our county managers today. And Sher, you already were hired as one, and I understand you got sworn in today, and I'm sorry I couldn't make it. Sometimes we're just booked double or triple sometimes. The Mullet Festival this Saturday and Sunday in Swans was one of the best, I think, they've ever had. I imagine Roy Spence can tell you some more about it, because I was down there when I ate some fish on Saturday, but they were trying to hold off on all the fish because they needed some for Sunday. That's how big it was. I mean, it was a big turnout, and I think the Swans did very well, and their economic development should have worked really well in that area. With that, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Knapp?
Ben and Sher, congratulations. I couldn't make it either. I wanted to be there, and I think that's great. Don't forget, this is Domestic Violence Month. Be aware of that. We had Dancing with Stars this weekend, and we raised a lot of money. And I just wanted to give a shout out to Candy Brown Thompson. She did a remarkable job. If you didn't attend the facility or the event, it was pretty fun. And a lot of people got out there and did their thing, and we raised a lot of money, and that's what's important. But the amount of work that they put into it is just unbelievable. I don't know how they did it. I think we had over 650 people attend this event at $50 a ticket, and every penny of it went to the women's shelter. And can't be more, I couldn't be more proud to be part of that. It was just really, really refreshing. So, but other than that, I just want to thank everybody for coming out. Be safe going home, and I appreciate you attending tonight.
Thank you, Commissioner Knapp. Vice Chair?
Thank you. I do want to congratulate Swansboro and their Chamber of Commerce on the Mullet Festival. The Rotary Clubs sold a whole bunch of fish and raised a lot of money to help in our community. So thanks for everybody that attended. Also want to thank Mr. Jamie Lanier, Entire Country USA, who donated a whole lot of mechanical auto-mechanics equipment to the school board this last week for their auto-mechanics program. That equipment will end up in the new skills center in a year or so, and it'll be great for the students of Onslow County to learn about auto-mechanics. I want to thank everybody that came tonight. It was a long, long time, and also would apologize for the misunderstanding on the zoning issue. We didn't change anything. It stays basically the same. The planning department was very careful to make sure that the zones that we assigned were the same, essentially, as what the city had previously assigned, and so that there'll be no change for the citizens, except they won't have to go to the City Hall anymore. They can just come over here. So I think it'll be better for everybody. Thanks again. Have a good night.
Thank you. Commissioner Knapp, do you have one more?
I failed to mention something I wanted to mention. Since our last meeting, we had an opioid forum, and I just want to say how well-attended that was. We had people from law enforcement. Sheriff Miller was there at the forum as well, medical providers, JPD. And the reason why I'm bringing this up, because I think there's some misconception out there with some of the public. They didn't understand a particular newspaper article and what it was saying. And what people don't realize is that we have taken on this task force, and we have been moving forward, and we've got our facility set to open in June or July of next year. And I can't thank our county manager, David Cotton, and Sheri Slater back there, our assistant, for the hard work that they're putting into this. Believe me, we were talking about it before the meeting, some little bumps in the road. But the funding has been there. Senator Harry Brown got us a grant for capitals in terms of the building is concerned. And what people don't realize, we are fast-moving on this, and we're gonna make it happen. And it's a start. We're gonna have a facility here. It's a joint venture with Carteret County as well, and I think it's much-needed. And we're really excited about this. We need to get the treatment out there available to those individuals that are in the pipeline. I use that word, and Sher knows why I use the word "pipeline", because it's important. And so I just wanted to thank you two publicly as well, because you guys put a tremendous amount of work into this, and I thank you for it.
Thank you, Commissioner Knapp. I'd like to also congratulate Ben Warren for his recent promotion to Assistant County Manager. I wasn't able to be here either. Thank, congratulations to Sheri, Sher and Turner for Deputy County Manager position and getting sworn in. And thank you, Brett, for stepping up to the plate and renewing your contract with us and for the good job. Vice Chair mentioned Jamie Lanier. He donated about $50,000 of equipment to Southwest School for the, that will probably be used to the Trade Center that will be operating, that we're having the groundbreaking ceremony tomorrow for. I think Principal Tim Foster said that that was right around, if they had to buy it new, was around a million and a half dollars of equipment that they have now that they can use to start the Trade Center. So that is a big, big hole that can be filled with the Trade Center, as far as money and funding and equipment, because that's what that school's all about. As far as the gentleman that wanted the meat for the inside, if you'll see me at the end of the meeting, I'll give you what I have here, and it's really just maps and all, but you're welcome to come forward and get it. And anytime anybody wants to meet part of the Commissioners' meeting, the back, that information is available. All you have to do is call our clerk, and they'll make arrangements for you to get that information and that, the meat part of the agenda. As far as the bleachers go, I'm sorry, we're not gonna get into rental business, but there is a MCCS is getting rid of, they're getting out of the bleacher business, too, because of liability. And they're sending all of their surplus bleachers to the auction block, and they declaring them surplus, and they'll be selling them in November, so that might be an avenue for some of the folks that need them. But other than that, have a good night, have a safe trip home. Entertained a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Move second. We are adjourned.